Seven o'clock, I'd like to tell the meeting to order.
By the way, this is duly by the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
When I get the beep.
All right, uh, board call, we have myself, Andy Free, Sue Kimball, Kimber, Hammer, and Spiker. Uh, Colleen's out, and we had a colleague, your assistant. Well, someone messing with me.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, is that you?
Um.
Oh.
All right. Well, that is definitely mine.
Yeah, that's yours.
Where did she go? Do you want this one?
I don't think it's gonna be here, but they come also.
Oh, it's working. You get all of the.
It's all.
Oh, very. Two silver.
You saw.
Me, me, or is that my?
No, that's, that's it.
Okay, everybody can use a, they're so. Like, sure. What?
You get that.
Took my boom away.
Lost mine as well.
Fine, maybe I'll sort after this.
Got it?
Go.
Thanks, Paul. Did anybody get a chance to read the minutes?
No. But I didn't mean to wind the question. There's, there was a blue note.
That finger, sorry. The group of meeting minutes from Tuesday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Good.
All those in favor?
Uh, how?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I would like to make a motion to approve the December one, twenty twenty five emergency board meeting minutes. If all those in favor?
Uh.
We didn't ask him.
So I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the Thursday, December fourth meeting. So good. All those in favor?
All right.
Thanks, thanks. Does that mean we don't have accepted? Correct?
Madam, here, is why I'm going to do this. We have the chairman of planning board here, who used to move the vision that I was told, so that if we did not take the order, so I've been on the last planning board meeting.
Yes. Thank you.
Evening. Um. Mr. Morgan, the planning board. To let you guys know that we have completed, um, the capital improvement plan and the growth management ordinance. We have submitted those to, uh, Jane and Roman Wilson, and she has come back with, um, commentary, with the minor edits on both, and she was actually really proud of the team that goes together with C I P, so it's almost flawless. So, kudos to Karen and Cam, who put a lot of work into that.
Absolutely.
And that's it. Um, so, basically, um, these documents, I'm, I'm gonna look at those tomorrow, I'm waiting to have both of them. I'm gonna have final comments and edits back to her. You should have, um, which I don't think is gonna require her to comment back, um, from what I saw. Couple of explanations and a couple of type of corrections, pretty much. So, what we've put together is a, two things for the public to know. Capital improvement plan is basically a five-year capital budget for you guys to utilize and use. And you can move things around, and now things cast in stone, push things out, and the whole thing is in based on need, but this kind of gives you an idea of, um, of everything that is in town that's gonna be on the capital expenditure. Light roads, um, both paved roads and, um, and dirt roads. Um, your equipment that you use in the highway department, and then all of your other things like facilities. So there's stuff in there, probably to keep this building, stuff in there for repairs. So basically, it's gonna be a guide for the budget committee to use along with the select board, and that's gonna be your wall, which will show you how you can move things in and out over the next five years to keep the tax rate stable. This is all about stability of the tax rate, so you don't have the spikes that you've seen over the last part of the decade. The, um, growth management ordinance, which has been presented because the feedback from the public, uh, the master plan ones that they would like to be going, were all of small. And that may not align with some of the, the, um, large landowners in town, because large landowners have sold land in the last couple of years, and they have not shown, um, an interest in conservation, they have not shown an interest in protecting that land, it's sold to high bidder. And that's a fair statement, this is true. So, based on that, um, it's up to the town to attempt to control growth. And the select board looked, excuse me, the planning board looked at this, and we felt that there has to be, um, a system put into place, and policies put into place that will be legally binding according. So the growth management ordinance that we came up with is to basically take a look at the building permits over the last five years. The average of those building permits is six point six. So some people would say, well, we should make it four. Well, I'm not sure that four would be legally binding in accordance with, especially during a housing crisis. So the planning board decided to take the number eight, as the number of building permits allowed per year. And because the building permits over the last five years are scattered, they're not all at once, they're spread out over the year, leaving six, because we've had six on average for the last five years, leaving six open on a first come, first served basis seem prudent to the plan. Then having two additional permits available for lottery, if you've got a flood on building permits. You could put up a lottery for those in months. Now, if you went through all six building permits and by February, and the select board decided that you wanted to move that date up, that dates a fluid date. Guys by a pro who, uh, have your lottery, whatever you want. But we felt that that period of time would be a, would be a good time to circle that. There's also a provision in the ordinance that allows carryover. Now, this seemed to be, um, this seemed to be quite a topic of discussion on the book of face, which I don't particularly care to talk to people towards, and I don't particularly care that when I sit up here and volunteer my time and tell the public that they please ask questions, please give concerns, please talk to us, and they don't say a word, and then they run home and become a keyboard warrior, that's a three-year rule, and I don't tolerate that crap. And I will not engage on Facebook with that type of BS. We're a town of eight hundred people. If you can't ask a question sitting fifty feet from me and have to run home and go on Facebook, I don't have time for that. I'm not here to waste my time. So I want to make that crystal clear, because it wasn't going. So now, carryover process. The carryover process is very, very simple. We are building an ordinance to issue eight permits a year. Let's say we don't issue a year one million, issue six. Again, because we have to be protective of legal challenges to the growth management ordinance, we can't sit there and say, well, six is it, that's it, it's over. Because what happens is, if you had six one year and six the next year, the growth management ordinance could be challenged as ineffective, because you don't need it, you don't have excessive building permits. So to allow for those years that might spike, which is what we've had, we had six, six, six permits, and nine, nine, and there's a bunch of them out now. So, the estimate was that we go from six, 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 nine million last five years, maybe ten, maybe ten, maybe twelve, maybe twelve, maybe fourteen, maybe fifteen, depending on what is gonna be developed on the land as organs. That's a concern. So, in order to protect the ordinance from legal challenges, planning board decided to allow a carryover. The carryover works very simply. If we're saying over a five-year period of time that we're only gonna issue forty building permits for single-family homes only, this does not include eighty hews, this does not include garages, this does not include barns, it does not include any type of outbuilding that you'd wanna build. This is just a single-family home. On a new lot, single lot record, right, single lot record, single family home. So, you build forty homes over five years. We shouldn't care, because we don't wanna be overly restrictive. We shouldn't care if people build forty homes, or thirty-six homes, or thirty homes, but what we should do is give them the opportunity to build those homes with one carryover. So, if you had eight building permits a year, you go to the following year, we only use six, there's two to carry over. The following year we'd have ten. Now, instead of having years go forward where, let's say there was only six the next year, and then five, four would carry over, it doesn't work. The maximum number of carryover that will be allowed in the ordinance is twelve. So if you had a year, like next year, if we only had four building permits, four would carry over the next year, that would be twelve available. If only ten building permits got issued, there would, there would only be two carried over for the following year. But if only two building permits got issued, and there were ten to carry over, in a year where there's eighteen, that would be reduced to twelve. So six building permits would disappear, because they're not being used. Now, the final thing about the growth management ordinance is, you can vote to rescind it at any point in time. It has a sunset clause, sunset's in twenty thirty, no. Public pastor would be vote on it at that time. You're responsible, the select board is responsible, in conjunction with the planning board, to review the growth management ordinance on an annual basis, and give a recommendation in the annual report on why the growth management ordinance would remain in effect. What are the outside conditions that are going on? What are the number of building permits that have been asked? That's the number of subdivisions that have been asked for. This is a very simple, one-page report that can be provided and discussed, to show that there is still a reason to have this in place. If there's a history over three or four years, where the eight building permits isn't working, and you're only issuing four, five, or six a year, then that would indicate that perhaps growing is a need. The growth management ordinance and the select board would vote to eliminate that, based upon the history of data that shows that you don't need them. I think that the community is reserved in how they feel about overdevelopment in town, because we have a volunteer fire department, we have a local police department, we have a limited highway department, and building, and we have a limited schools. So, rapid growth, fifteen homes a year, would be really unsustainable for your public services. And that is something the select board needs to work on, with the fire department, and with, with the highway department, because your problem is that growth is going to happen, you can't stop it. You can control it, you can slow it down, you can keep that role feel for as long as you can. But I can't tell you whether there'll be eight hundred people, six hundred people, or a thousand people that are going in twenty thirty-five. My guess would be that it will be higher than eight hundred. But it was gambling, man, I thought it was down. But how high, you don't know, because people age out and people, uh, so those numbers will fluctuate. But your responsibility and planning board's responsibility, in a community that doesn't particularly care for rules, and I get it, but this is not a rule of restraint, this is a rule of protection. So the community needs to decide whether they wanna roll the dice and gamble that no one's gonna come here, or protect themselves from that growth. It's, it's really as simple as that. And quite frankly, if the public, if, let's say there's a rush on building permits for people that live in Creighton, and that people in Creighton wanna develop their land, this isn't even people coming from the outside. They have the ability to put a petition one hour, or remove the growth management. There is always a way, or a rule to pass, and both will be changed. Nothing is ever one hundred percent higher than stone, just have good luck. And the protection for the town, I think, is vitally important to protect faster. And that's what we're working on. So, the final documents will be, should be finalized by the end of this week. Once I get a okay from Jane, we're gonna put them on websites, the public will hook up them. There is a public hearing on January seventh, seven PM right here. That public hearing will be for the unity to comment, for the voters to comment on the documents that are gonna be published sometime early next week.
Did you say it, seven PM?
Seven PM, on, on January seventh.
Yep.
And if there's an overwhelming desire to change something that's in the document, public desires to change, the planning board agrees with the change, then there will have to be a second public hearing to be scheduled for the twenty-first. And that all should meet the timelines of requirement. I've also asked the attorney to prepare the warrants, because you gotta have the exact one. If you recall, the master plan warrant was very specific, almost a half a page. So I've asked the attorney to prepare the warrants for those two items. And the last thing, and the only other thing, zoning board has put forward a livestock ordinance, which cleans up the livestock ordinance they tried to put in last year. As soon as I get these two finalized, I'll set that one off to change. I think, um, I got a, I've given them a template to use, they've supplied a shorter version back, we'll see if the attorney fills out. Any questions for me?
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you know, I'm close on Facebook after everything.
I'm not gonna wait for you to leave. And you're gonna think, uh, you are, uh, F. But now you're punished, because you're gonna have the rules. Well, we have a land use change tax warrant, besides therapy problems.
So, as John has written down, uh, I will change tax, right? The, 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 uh, language.
The law, yeah, that's what, but we don't have new motions, I know.
Uh, please, man. This is a one, please, uh, one time. Yes, this is a one-time one, we exchange tax, and then the land itself will then be assessed at normal amount, so that will go onto the tax laws, but this one time, uh, amount, will probably put on a higher level. Sure, my eyes are on. I think that will be the one. You're gonna be happy without the laugh, because I'm allowed now. So, we received an email on Monday, eleven twenty-four, one forty-six PM, uh, with a subject question. Because the board has requested that, anyone a lot of questions, or questions that we really need to respond to, research, he sent to us, no later than the Thursday, Friday, and we gave it to you, so that you have some time to research and provide a proper response. Uh, we answered the email, uh, in a secondary responsive email. So we spent some time going through, breaking down the whole entire, all emails, and, um, provided some answers. So, um, I'm going with those, which will be minutes now. And the email came from a woman, a daughter, who asked some questions. So, it breaks down into several different components. One, I see the board is requesting almost thirteen thousand dollars for cash checks. So the answer is actually the amount the board is requesting, um, which is necessary to offset the, the cost from overrun for the cash free project is twelve thousand nine hundred eighty-seven seventy-one. So far, that's about thirty-five. The second part of the question, at one meeting, it was around six thousand dollars. And so I went back to my meetings. Because the other mention provided to us was through town, the moderator, Russell Edwards, and he provided information, said a lot on several different across the house, almost four thousand dollars, just for shoulder work, which is even after grading. Um, the lungs were to fill the gaps in the budgeting from the day they got it, and another one was for a mountain about six thousand dollars. Third one, why the big difference? So, despite the number of requests made to the road agent for an accounting of the amount of, and need for the additional funds, because these are the same questions we were asking, um, we received a lab of response regarding this necessary reporting responsibility, which is a core of all state. So, number four, is this coming out of the trust funds for the gravel roads? At the time that the additional funding request was made by town moderator, Russell Edwards, for the cash free project, the board anticipated that perhaps the highway department would be over budgeted. So the suggestion was made that perhaps these additional ones be allocated from this Sierra, or the gravel Sierra, or the emergency road Sierra, as there would probably not be money in the highway department budget to cover it. If so, why? Please see the answer to the previous question. We just, we needed better reporting and financial accounting, and, um, we needed to, to, to get some answers to our questions. So number six, in one recent meeting, it stated we have seventy thousand dollars left in the highway budget, did I hear that? So yes, the board requested that in the audit of the highway department budget be completed at the end of October twenty twenty-five. And we determined that, if we have all the posts and receipts, which we believe we do, then we have approximately seventy thousand dollars remaining in the highway department budget. Number seven, if this is the case, I would like to know the reasoning for not using those budget lines, because they will just deduct them to the general public here. So the remainder of this budget is currently being used as contract for the brave in compacting of gravel roads. Which we've done before this year though, as many gravel roads were not ready to receive. It's too dry, they'll even get done, that's just the way it happened, but we had a chance to get it done, we want to get it done. We are purchasing the salt and sand for the upcoming winter season, and the cost for that will come out of the name of this. The one time in front of these two new batteries, and these will be curcure from the revamp of the highway. And in repairs without keeps that needs to be made to the highway garage and or the highway yard, which cannot be done by one people to set up to help us, are going to come out of this budget. Contract work which we made for the planning will be paid out of the revenue of this budget. Question eight, how much did we pay for the household house this place disposed of this year with upper value? The total cost was nine hundred sixty one forty five. I'll take a minute here. This information was not for the finalized report, and I want everybody to know. The week before Thanksgiving week, I called upper value manager. The person who actually runs all of these has sent the invoices, the end of the final invoices out to everybody. So the gentleman that I spoke to said, well, let's figure out how many people actually came up to the household base. Because you started in the end of the year. I spent probably forty eleven minutes on all of these, we wanted to go. So we have, there was ten households, so personally we thank you for that's ten people that came up and disclosed their stuff and did their job with all of the gent. Great, a lot. And we didn't have to take it to the transportation. I know they're distributed into the building stuff from the transportation, but there'd be four houses with passing tracks. And we don't want to be done as mean as schools generally, because that's what we feel about them. So just saying that is a good thing. And all that information will be included in the town report. Question number nine, how much was the total cost paid off in master plan update? Seventeen thousand nine hundred forty five dollars and ninety cents. Fifteen thousand dollars was from the twenty twenty four warrant article from number twelve. And two thousand nine hundred forty five dollars and ninety cents was from the planning and some operating budget expenses. This information will also be included in the town report. Number ten, will the town get an accounting from the fire department as to how much of the twenty thousand dollars was spent and filled up? It is taxpayers' money, and that should be accounted for, I would think. So the warrant article, I'll hand back, stated that the appropriated funds would help with stabilizing personnel and their time and cost for those services. So the town voted on it, and they voted on it seventy four to twenty eight to give the fire department those calls. This is the service that the town needs. First of all, we need our fire department, we need our lawn care guys, we need, need to help them. That's my personal opinion, sorry, it's nothing to do with this. But it happens now.
I agree.
So no matter the warrant article, was there any kind of wording with that? It stated that according volunteer fire department given account for most of uses of us. So perhaps that leads me to the next warrant, or I vote that's what people want. However, there was a town to person who did speak up, wasn't it? And asked for more information in the future town reports, so perhaps that will, well, now. Number eleven, of the first email. Lastly, another resident said she saw a lady doing the Newport side of the Detroit road. Oops.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
Newport was grading, was grading Burke Road on the Monday before Stevens started on Brighton Road. Stevens never used Detroit its greater for Newport Road, period, end of story.
And I did see, could speak with Tim West from the Newport Highway Department at the Town Line Road, and it was Newport's grading. Newport's crew grading Newport's portion of Corydon local road.
That's, that's much more factual and necessary than what I'm going to say.
Yes, sorry.
I, mine is, this is not a question. It can be called hearsay, which is synonymous with rumors, or gossip, which is unsubstantiated or malicious information. And the person making this comment is an email they heard without being a direct witness to what's happening. This could also be called false reporting. So I, I would, if, if, if you saw something, you're going to talk to us, and then we can, we can answer these questions by actually having the information, but. So we got a return email. We sent it to Mrs. Nar, maybe you have, but the question is advised that the agenda was full. I also reviewed a ten week last night, for the last, the last week, and it was very cool, we had a lot going on. And we were interviewing some people, so we were very much concerned about. And that we would take these questions to this meeting, but we would have an answer for her. So we received a response email on Tuesday, the day of the meeting, at seven twenty two, and so it beats criteria. So that response email says, well, I would think that these can be answered, we're going to use email, question about hot short analogies, short analogies, I don't know, yeah, I got two short analogies on it. I don't know how to answer that. But I'll say, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what she's talking about, but the laptop that was at the highway department was returned to the town in unusable condition, so we put the question about that first. Second of all, the treasurer should be able to pull it all up as far as what was paid out. Heck, yes, we were able to receive our information from our treasurer. Who went through all the vouchers and receipts and invoices during the audit. It's not possible to buy those, those town things. Number three, vouchers should be there everywhere at all, if please see the answer above. Number four, since they are asking for the extra monies for cash free, I would think they know why. This is redundant, but since the board has no other option, we have to request additional funding offset the cost overrun on cash free funding, it just, it needs to be done. And number five, this is why I get so frustrated with this board. I don't see a question here. So I'm going to answer it, I just don't see a question. Number six, the agenda is always full, it seems. Yeah, I don't see a question here either, but you know, it, we, we're trying to get things done. So then number seven, maybe they need to have longer meetings, or do them weekly, like I was telling them asking, so the suggestion. So, Mrs. Nar, the special way, I don't find any bear with this suggestion, but again, I think if you let us know how to make a language business. There are two thousand and eighty working hours a year. Average the hours spent in meetings to about a hundred hours, and that is four point eighty one percent. How about four point five percent of working hours that are spent in meetings? Numbers also serve on and solve other boards.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, please.
Yes, there's roughly two thousand working hours a year. I'm looking at at least four people, if not five, at this table, that all have full-time jobs consuming all two thousand hours of those plus every year. The five percent that you're claiming to be factual on your paper, pardon my French, is bullshit, excuse me. That's what I think of that. Everyone here has a family, everyone here has children, grandchildren, a life. We took this position to do the best we could for this town. Don't start, please, don't start telling me how much time I should invest when I don't see the same investment on that side of the table. I see nothing but ridicule, I see no productive answers, I see no solutions, and I see nothing positive come forth from this person. Ever. I appreciate the patience for my slide out first, that's all I have to say about that part of this subject.
Well, I'm not going to.
Oh, don't worry, I might go either.
No, I, I'm still, we're still finishing the. So, oh, I thought the reason for five members was so that they could get more compensation. Again, cooperation and teamwork are necessary on board, it's so necessary. The task can be divided in a sign, and things can be completed, and it's so very valuable to have so many different and varied perspectives. Not only on a board, but from everybody else. The respect that we see and have for each other, and the respect that we typically get from everybody, is, it's invaluable. We couldn't do this job without. I don't, I don't, I don't see a question here, but I wanted to bring that out, I really wanted to bring that out. So this is, this is not a question, but it's part of the email from a frustrated non-c taxpayer, but still a resident that alleviates the board because I ask questions, I love questions, just bring us questions. She, I'm not even going to continue on with that, she's passing along, I'm listening if I can hear the video. So the, the, the board completely understands her frustration. When one party is making a request for information from another party, which has an obligation, by or otherwise, to answer the first party, and the first party does not receive a response, it can be very difficult not to be discouraged. You know, and coming back to your question, your whole, in a two-hour meeting, fifteen minutes of questions, and quite frankly, coming from a single person is twelve point five percent of the general meeting clock. That's it, that's, that's the whole thing. So I'm, I'm happy to email you this, so you get the email to the. There we go.
Thank you.
If you can.
Thanks, Kim.
So the next item is the new road agent, correct?
Uh, the Simmons.
Can I have a great hearing? Before I announce the new road agent. I'm going to speak a little bit about the Facebook rhetoric that's been going on, and I know I have not engaged, I have silenced all of the breaking pages, because like my, my, my heart is pounding right now, and I'm not even looking at a page. I've silenced them, I don't see them because they are not productive, I don't want to see them, I don't want to see screenshots of them, unless they're emergencies. The childish behavior and nonsensical rhetoric on Facebook has to stop. It has caused the workload at this table to go to enormous amounts. We lost the first road agent hire because of the Facebook crap that went out. And then the second people that came in to, to step in to help me and to help this board in the town of Troyden, got slandered all over Facebook. We're not around anymore. Happy about it, makes my job harder. But I will tell you that Mr. Doug Green set those trucks up, got them ready to go, got Steven Gold of Troyden, got Jason Rucker of Troyden, and Cam Maynor of Troyden, all familiar with all three vehicles, and now we have people on the payroll that live in this town, they're taking care of our roads because they want to. I don't have time to read all the B S on Facebook, and I'm not going to do it. I am too busy trying to get this stuff done and losing sleep. I scrambled to get approved so we could have clear roads, are they perfect? No, they're not, they're not ever going to be perfect, but we're doing our best, the guys that we have these trucks are doing their best, they're qualified, and they're trained. And I'm going to tell you, this board interviewed a magnificent person. He's from the town of Clermont, he currently works in the town of Lebanon, his name is Mitchell Demany, he's in his mid thirties. He has every qualification he had asked for. He read the master plan before his second interview, and he said, I noticed your budget is this much money, but I also notice you want to, you want to improve your roads in the future, how can I make that work with this budget? I said, we have C R Fs for this, and this, and this, and he looked into it, and the man, he's thorough, he's knowledgeable, he's skilled, and he's going to get the job done. And I'm going to be proud to have that man start on January fifth. And I'm sorry, people in this room want answers on Facebook, I'm not, I'm not putting myself out there to get slandered, I can't do it. Some of whom, we don't, we are not legally obligated to put anything on Facebook. It's on our website, it's here at the office, and it's in our minutes. We are hiding anything, we're just working and trying to get the work done. So, and now I get to do another announcement that maybe everybody knows.
No, that's ridiculous.
The new, I say okay. The tax rate for twenty twenty five is eight dollars and ninety eight cents per thousand. Last year it was fourteen dollars and ninety nine cents, so we have really done some great things, and moving forward, I think we're going to do some great things, the school is doing some great things, so. All this hard work, yes, all this hard work has paid off well. The tax bill will be mailed December ninth, twenty twenty five, and they're due January twelfth, twenty twenty six.
They are, they're all online, and you go to the website, you can give your tax go. Do you want to look at it, you want to come and pay it, you don't even have to have it, then you do that, but they, they're getting nailed out.
You can print it out, print it if you want, it'll kind of be a nice.
And a reminder to those seeking abatements for their property taxes after revaluation, all twenty twenty five taxes must be paid to file for abatement. So pay them first, talk after. The tax rate, welcome to the bill that we're getting, yes, we, yes. I'm going to look over from.
So the Avatar twenty twenty six contract, I got an email saying that we hadn't signed it yet, and I, we, I talked to Kim, and we thought we had. Yeah. I, they, I looked through my emails, I don't have recollection of sending it from me. But the rate also went up a little.
I need to.
Correct.
Just how many you still need, if they have, do you need to tell them, why don't we have them? I would call Shelley and talk to them, but if we do just sign it, then they have to pay the ethical, we only have one unit.
And it doesn't start till January anyway.
So I will, I'll call and contact them, get some clarification, but I know, and we all sat here and looked over, if you have, that, sending, it's on.
Right, but I don't know if he actually visited ever.
I, yeah, I know he saw.
You have a sweet question, yes.
So I will contact Shelley and get some clarification on the stuffs.
The one year in the fall year.
Yes.
Upcoming meetings, so we have the public hearing on Thursday at six thirty here for the transfer station fees. Then we have next Tuesday, the sixteenth, at six. Then we have next Tuesday, the sixteenth at six thirty, we'll have a working meeting to discuss the twenty twenty six warrant articles. Our next scheduled meeting is January thirteenth, so it is quite a gap there. We will need to schedule a budget committee. Uh, meeting before the thirteenth, once Russ is back. Um, so that we can finalize the budget, so that we can schedule our budget hearing. Hopefully for that first week of February.
The budget hearing.
The budget hearing.
Okay, good.
Public's budget here.
So I'm out from the sixth to the thirteenth of January.
January, yes.
Yeah, so. You gotta do the budget right before the budget, uh, meeting, right before that, the week after Christmas, I don't mind.
Oh, we said the fifth, sixth.
Oh, is that, no.
So we're, we're taking that one away because we thought it had to be right away. Don't say that.
Oh, no.
Cause it doesn't need to be that early in the year, and that doesn't give us enough time to finalize the budget.
Okay, so we all have to run that fast.
And then I need two and a half weeks lead time to put it in the paper. Or three and a half weeks lead time, excuse me, it has to be in the paper two weeks ahead of it. Updates from town clerk, tax collector. Basically everything that we just said, um, in the above. So tax commitment verification, done that, transfer station permit policy, we're discussing that on Thursday. Property taxes are due January twelfth.
I do have a part of that here on the transfer station, so we're almost to do a lot of communication. He, he had spoken about it, cleaning up, he was miscellaneous. Uh, he contacted, he was an N R A because there was a vendor that could take all of the mixed load stuff. And so we'll scheme out of them Monday or Tuesday. The free on items are gone, we have tonne bags, we found, all of that miscellaneous. So that'll be nice if we, uh.
Alright, so. I think we're both want to do. I make a motion to open for the board, so all those in favor.
Um, it's just.
Um, baby.
I just want to be two to horn and, you know, blah. Or curtains because they weren't here for the meeting.
They were so wonderful, every time I see your eyes.
I'm still with the society of papers that.
It's perfect. Yeah, and, and back, historical, even in look when she was overjoyed, so that's good.
All the time, and so, standing on the ladder and holding the ladder and rubbing on the down, you know, they're, they're awesome.
And Cam Coniston let us use their Compton furniture, cause if they felt, that's a lot of fabric, the handling, you know? Yes, the rear was. We don't care. So you talk about wanting people to contact you, but you know, on the town website, there is nowhere to contact. And select for the planning board, anywhere, there's no lease that anybody can email.
No, no.
There is nothing for any, any of the committees at all. So how would people contact?
We'll have to get the email on there.
Now, is that the part of Paul's concern? Is having the, the locked emails for each one of us and have it linked to the website? And that, with the new company, the new, um, I T company, that's something we can probably work out. Soon, right?
That's it, we should, we should, we should, we should see nothing individually, everything should funnel right through her. And then if it says, attention, it's better than her. That's who it goes.
Alright, so at least make sure we have the add the admin email on the select for the select board.
I really, I really think that's the one we should have.
Well, I can't, like, the planning board having at the.
Yeah, see, I don't, I don't.
And it's got a place for a personal phone number. I don't know, I don't know if I need that.
So it's been a work to have the emails done, but we need to get the. The rural factor emails, the whole white town, we can make the mountain sauce sixty five, that's how we. When we got little, little lights, since getting the technology because. Unfortunately, people who are, now the tax collector, as he switches into many hats because he's really not a, a cheap person. But in terms of being around cheap person, he goes, you don't have one that we pay.
For the missing appointment for next year.
That was gonna be the, the one that.
We've got an idea of, yes, it's sometime to change.
Is that the one that was, yes.
So then, yeah, depending on the cost of, maybe something.
That's true. We, uh, so we're just, but it has to be done by them as part of our operating expenses for lots.
I don't know, I could have to dump every week, these leaders, every Saturday one. And recently, I've noticed, and I don't know if you guys have realized or seen the bill lately, but every time I go down there. One bin that's where my household items has been, oh, I've never seen that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Did the prices go up in Newport, other places, and these guys are bringing this stuff to our pump because I've never seen that.
If they are, they're paying for it. I mean, I, I know that doesn't, I, I know it doesn't really ease many minds as far as getting your own trash in there. But if, if it is, I hope they've got their punch cards, I would assume so.
I know Mason is really good about the punch cards.
He's been.
Yeah.
I've never seen it act forever.
Yeah, actually Steve.
It's gonna cost us some money.
Yes, and I don't know. I remember emptying it weekly.
Yeah.
Yeah, weekly, weekly, that's what I'm looking at.
I think it actually runs for a while, was, uh, well, we saw was like, and now we're all to leave.
Yeah, and I was concerned, cause that being somebody else, the other towns are raised to raise, and these guys are burning the bar of town, and now us actually knowing that this is the bar of town.
Well, if they bring it to a friend's house and the friend's house is burning here, they're not dust, it's not, yeah.
That's, well, yeah, we can raise our.
Well, that's.
It grows first.
Yeah, it, it's been, uh, yeah, it's, you know, the rules, so.
I also have silenced Facebook. I have, I did, I did look, I looked at it for the transfer station, so if tomorrow we get snow and it's not what happened. It's not tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Wednesday is still, okay. You go to the town website and it'll be there and when I'm like, oh, it's not on, it all starts here. Oh, Mason, Mason will text me.
Okay.
And we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
And then I'll say, Kim, throw it on the website and.
Gotcha.
I'll, I'll put it on Facebook, but I will not comment back to anybody. Yeah, if, if by the course I got, I'll do that.
Even if you can turn on commenting?
Yes. I know I saw a lot of people too when I've done that. So what was supposed to be like?
Yeah, it doesn't look like a big storm.
No, it's, oh, it's, yeah, yeah.
Yes. There are.
We were talking about don't lose the hours, so I didn't know that did get.
No, it hasn't yet, we're gonna try and work on.
Discussing different calls for different days.
However, Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve.
They are close.
When the graduation will be.
And then everyone went on playing with the huge amounts of crap and paper. They don't come here three days later.
And the box.
I'm just saying, just lay it on, it on air, grievance, I'll take it, we got broad shoulders and slip back that day, forget.
And bring more some Christmas chocolate.
Don't forget Mason's Christmas cookies.
Right, he works his tail off.
Anybody else have anything?
I made the motion to vote for him.
I second.
All of us favorite.
Are you all good?
I need more from you, Jim.
So.
What, you don't want?
Wow.
Psych, psych efficiency works every now and then.
You want to roll, you can stay up past her.
Put him in there. I don't know what happens if you send it to me.